To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, the motion to adjourn to open meeting, still move. Number two, second. Location of the Open Meetings Act, it's posted in the back of the room. I also want to look at it. Roll call, change.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yep.
No, yes.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
What's up? Sorry, we were supposed to vote on the open meeting. Motion, go back. All favor say aye. No, motion carried. Sorry, just a minute.
Doesn't invalidate anything that's on.
Number five, approve the agenda.
Action item seventeen, that should be twenty-four, twenty-five, sorry. Action item seventeen, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then I had sent you an email that on your notes, back of the agenda, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, all of those should be second reading.
Mine was the second reading?
Yeah, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, that'll be on your second page of the lesson. Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, right there, all of those should say second.
Okay, everybody get those changes. Motion to approve the agenda, change, they have changes. So, move. Thank you, sir. One second. We've decided in all favor to aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Six, move on to the consent agenda. Start of the minutes from last Wednesday. Questions, changes on the minutes, and move on to the financials.
Kelly, what do we get in revenue today?
Oh, today we got Pierce Counties, and between two, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Seven ninety-eight just Pierce, so we add a little bit Knox, so we should have about a million in revenue this one. September is one of four pretty good months, one of three real big ones, so that kind of gets us through the fall for payroll.
Problem is, it's only about two months of bills.
That's true.
On the head cash report, what's the Michael McRae's great team about?
He was a pre-service speaker that I brought in for our staff, so not every third or fourth year I have somebody to talk to our staff in addition to myself, Kyle and Jim. He's the superintendent of the Hupp West Side.
Is he better before?
No. He was very proud of the better school.
We don't pay that eighteen hundred dollars to tell you your school sucks.
Saying I bought that compliment.
No, I'm just saying.
He's Kyle's, Mr. Schmidt's high school principal. He was, or I'm sorry, he was Mr. Schmidt's superintendent when Mr. Schmidt was in school, and he was Abby Kush's principal when he was principal at West Point, so he knew a couple faces in the crowd, shared a couple stories.
Any questions there on the financials, if we wanted the claims? So, the claims of North Center Public Power, the first one, and then there's one later, there's two different.
Yes, yes, and they had to have a separate check for the single face.
So they will schedule the work for the garage as soon as they get this check.
Oh, that's important. They have to pay the. Questions on the claims? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, as stated.
Okay, one second.
Second.
Move to the second, approve the consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carried. Move to number seven, student presentation.
Got time.
And we'll move to number eight, public comment. Anybody that might have to speak tonight?
I'd just like to say.
I'll say my, I'll say my.
Oh.
We're pretty worried about you.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the agenda says I have a public comment, each person wishing to address the board would be recognized, but the board president must stand and state your name. You'll have like five months to speak, and we will not do so. Please remember this meeting is made by the Public Schools Board of Education, is held in public. Comments are not accurate, obscene, or fain, slander, spreading, or hostile will not be tolerated. Further advised, there's no legal protection for any comments made. Public comment is an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support for civil business. Public comment is not an opportunity for open dialogue with the board while in open session. Board members will listen and take comments and advisement, but will not respond to questions or comments. Patrons are encouraged to follow board policy if they have a concern about personal or school operations.
Oh, I just wanted to comment on your possible action on our change of our policy as far as sick leave and vacation and whatnot. We've had this current policy in place for a number of years, long before I was here. It's been added to. Things have been, you know, long years, longevity has been added in. If you're here for ten years, you gain a few more days, which just helps the work atmosphere, and it creates, I think, the average, even with Bill Lean retiring last year, our average tenure of the custodians, for example, is still ten years experience just within, plain to not outside, our district. I think that's a pretty positive thing. I think what we have right now is it helps prolong that, it helps keep people here. If we need to hire someone new in the future, that's always been a spot that people look at is what benefits does the school offer? And that's one of the reasons why I started working here twenty-plus years ago. It was the benefits, what was in the whole package. And I guess I just say, have to say, I think it's not really broken, and yeah, it might have a few more columns to add up, you know, separating things, but I don't think it's a bad thing. I think it's okay, I don't think we need to change it, so thanks for listening.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else who wanted to speak? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Starting with number nine, board development, page thirty-two, thirty-four, books. I believe it's all dealing with.
All of us.
As usual, just a good refresher on the whole process goes.
I don't know how you can do all this stuff and not be at a meeting every night. Some of the stuff they suggest you do, you have committees to do, I guess maybe if you had nine people on your board, you could have a few more people in the committees to do all this stuff. So much just.
And I suppose that big Class A schools probably have a department for this type of thing.
They obviously suggest a variety of ways to arrive at the same conclusion, and so, you know, oftentimes you might be fortunate enough that it's not, it's not a difficult pathway, you know, for a small cohesive board managing the school district that doesn't have tremendous amount of issues, personnel.
I think we did an excellent job of reviewing our policies. And you definitely pointed that out, what we do and some of the schools don't. Any other comments? We'll move on to number ten, committee reports. Budget in negotiations. Well, I know the budget committee has been being, almost three or four times two, pretty much got a budget ready present. Those figures are coming out.
They've been sent to the paper.
Sent to the paper today.
Can I, yep, push those out to the full board tonight? If that's what the committee wants me to do, it'll be public in the paper on Wednesday, Thursday, I guess. Harry notices with those numbers.
Yeah, we got six-thirty, six-thirty next Monday night.
Six-thirty, the first hearing.
And that's the full board, or is this the budget?
Full.
It's a whole. So tonight, what we discuss, we're not actually voting on anything tonight.
Well, we're voting on the seven percent, additional seven percent.
Gotcha.
It's getting voted, and as we've been meeting, talking about that, well, we'll get into that, I guess, in number twelve.
No way we can discuss that until action item, but discuss.
I think so. Discussion. Yeah, so you should be getting a copy of the budget if you're able to increase the levy by incentive, save tax asking. Two, yeah, about two seventy, two hundred seventy thousand, we're gonna pass class of taxpayers. Granted that we're helped out by the state an awful lot this year. We got seven hundred fifty thousand, right? What it was. Something like that. So, that makes a big difference. Evaluations, like ten percent. We had a six percent increase. Yeah, six percent, six percent increase in budget letters over last year.
Well, we figured out just the increase in insurance is a penny and a half, or a penny and a half of levy, just for the increase.
What did it go up for this next year?
Seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent, yeah.
Help benefits been up seventeen percent, boys. Anything else you guys want to add? We won't talk about later, number twelve.
Do you guys have a question?
You guys have questions for?
I can wait till number twelve.
All right, negotiations have been meeting quite a bit, too.
Yeah, we've been meeting, it's also on this possible change to the classified staff on their PTO days from where they're at now to what our proposal, what we've been talking about, is, and what it's doing is making it simpler. We have several different groups depending upon whether you're nine month, ten month, full-time, full-time, hour layer, full-time salary, and each one has a different system, different numbers, and it's a little bit hard to keep it all straight. And what we're proposing would make that a lot simpler. Instead of having sick leave, a personal days, a bereavement days, they would just have days that they could use them for whatever they wanted. They wouldn't be classified in any way, so it would make it easier to keep track of, and also easier for the employees to use them where they need to be, instead of being running out of one or two bereavement days, and needing three or four where they could have. So that's kind of a good way to talk about this more, too. So you guys want to add something?
Okay, we'll move on to eleven, N A S B regional meeting was last Wednesday night. Three of us were able to attend that, I thought it was a good meeting. They had sessions that dealing with the open meeting laws, some of the changes that have gone on at N A S B they started out with. And I, in particular, went to workshop about engaging the community and also our staff members, which was good. And sat in on the legislative review, where they tell you all what's went on, and it was a very busy year in the legislature this year, they get thrown together, I didn't realize so many different bills got put into one, and you had to sign it, because you might like this bill, you don't like these thirteen others, but you lumped it all into everything, so you had to sign it.
I think last year, at State Convention, when I went to the legislative session, they put like seventy-seven bills. We voted on all of them, one vote, all seventy.
That's a big deal.
Well, they asked if anybody wanted to pull any out, you know, and discuss them, and nobody did, so we just voted.
And then we were able to have Senator DeCay, who was at our table for supper, so we had a nice conversation with him, and he kind of gave us his thoughts on how his first year went, what he's expecting to happen in the future, so that was good. He was glad to have him sit at our table. You guys want to add anything?
I made them take a picture. Nobody was thrilled.
With DeCay.
Yes.
So what was his opinion on the seven percent?
We did talk a little bit about that. He said that he's pretty confident that the state money is going to continue to come, at least for the time being.
As long as he comes in office, he feels.
Feels it's a pretty.
Important issue for him. He did put a strong emphasis that Hillen's legacy is in the education, that Hillen wants to see our schools thrive and our taxpayers have to be, and that's the whole point of all of this.
Yeah, as far as the seven percent, I think he said, you know, just use it judiciously, or be careful of what you're using it for. I don't know if he had an opinion one way or another, or if you remember his.
Did he give a political answer?
He did, he sure did. He, I believe he's a local control advocate, so he trusts you, he trusts local boards. He's from Niagara, so he trusts local boards more than he trusts the unicameral to make decisions here in the boardroom. So unicameral gives local boards decision-making on the seven percent. And, but he just, you know, remember your taxpayers, I think was, you know, maybe his final, which is, was also the governors, and Senator Breezy was the sponsor of the bill, who used to be our senator, so there's a tremendous amount of concern by Senator Breezy and the governor that that school district should take advantage of the opportunity to spend, not so much take advantage of the opportunity to give yourself the authority, which is what action item twelve is, so I, Senator DeCay said what I kind of hoped he would say, and what I expected him to say.
Any comments? Okay, well, we'll move on into our action items, number twelve. I got some language on this one. The next item on the agenda is to discuss, consider, and take the necessary action to adopt a resolution increasing the school district's base growth percentage, used to determine the school district's property tax requests authority by up to seven percent. So, at this point, we'll have some discussion on it. I sent some notes out to you guys today. Anybody want another copy of those, I've got one if you want.
Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
I can make a copy of this, yeah.
I got enough for.
Who do you? Okay.
I did a lot of research on all of this, and I've lost some sleep over this, too.
So I guess I'll just kind of start off, just giving you an overview, you know, so everybody out there knows kind of what's going on, too. The L B two forty-three allows schools to increase their school district's base growth percentage, which is used to determine the tax asking authority, from three percent up to seven percent, depending on the district's enrollment. The plan would fall into the category where it could go up to seven percent. I believe larger schools are less than that. Just some other notes, our current budget proposal we're working on right now is asking approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of last year's property taxes from last year, and our levy's looking to go down ten cents, down to sixty-four and a half cents. Through this, the plan that the governor signed, you receive approximately, now this might be not quite right, seven hundred fifty thousand? Is that the number?
Seven thirty-three.
Seven thirty-three. Seven hundred thirty-three thousand is stating, which is a lot of money, but roughly ten percent of our budget. And we also saw a ten percent increase in valuations this year. We talked about it, our budget is up six percent from last year with inflation, health insurance, salaries, and personnel expenses are the main items that are on the rise there. The proposal that we're asking tonight is we're asking for a seven percent increase, but the committee is not recommending access to any of those funds. So this is not going to raise our tax asking one bit, but it has been here on a budget. It's just our authority to ask for more, if we should need it down the road. If the economy turns, has a downturn, something unforeseen happens, you have that opportunity to use those funds. If for some reason, the unicameral goes back, and we don't get as much money as what we've got, it just gives us that opportunity to do so. It will not affect this year's budget, so. And I've laid out some reasons and advantages, or if we don't pass, things like that, so feel free to discuss.
So if the current budget proposal takes it down ten cents on the levy, is that taking it down too far for what next year might mean? Would we have to raise it by the seven cents next year and have it back where it is currently? I mean, if we do nothing, if we do nothing, if we leave it the way that it is, the land valuation puts more money in the school's pocket. If we leave it just as it is, and we don't mess with it, we don't put it up or down, we just leave it. Have you guys, did you look over that in the budget?
I don't think we can, is that correct, Dr. Ollie? Because we're yet the maximum, aren't we, right?
We are already spending a hundred percent of our authority in the budget that I just emailed to you. So, but that's a, but that, with the three percent allowable growth, so this, I get it, we don't want a boomerang effect next year. This current budget has some expenditures budgeted that won't be necessary next year, so I think it is wise to try to look beyond this next budget into the budget after this, and, you know, what are we maybe going to see? I don't know what the valuations will do, whether we have another spike or not. But we did talk about that in our budget committee, and we looked at some specific budgeted funds primarily as to finish paying off debt for last summer's H VAC project, and to reimburse building fund for funds borrowed for payroll coming up on two years in December, so.
So we'll have to be repaid this year in December.
In this budget cycle. So even though we're at ten, we're looking at a ten cent decrease in the levy, because valuations went up, it's only a decrease in property tax asking, which it is, which is the important thing, of over a quarter million. It still could be a lean year, I mean, we still will have to, and it could or should be, I mean, I'm just saying we have to be fiscally responsible as the, and we could potentially, some of the funds that we budgeted, for example, to reimburse C D monies, that might be necessary for payroll once we get into the spring, you know, we don't know, but that won't have to be budgeted in twenty-five, twenty-six, or I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five, so a year from now. So what this does is puts it at a better starting point for that budget next year, because a seven, the seven percent would add four hundred and thirty-seven, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to our tax asking authority.
Could you say that number again?
About four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to our tax asking authority for this year, and the budget committee is not recommending accessing any of that. You're authorized to, but it will not be in the budget that's being recommended to the full board. But that number will be carried over to next year in your tax asking authority, so it does put you in a safer spot next year. Tim, can I mention something else unexpected that we might have? Our, our fire range hood ventilation system in the kitchen, we have to replace that in May. And it's going to be pricey, because everything above it has to be refitted. We've moved water lines, we've got to move gas lines in our ceiling, that's going to be expensive. Now, we're going to find out that pretty soon, our insurance might pay for it. It wasn't damaged in the storm, but they can't put the roof back together precisely the right way unless it's fixed, so by extension.
And that's on the east side?
That's right, that's right, extension, so it's the kitchen. I'm working with our transportation, that's four thirty-nine, two-two-nine is that number, four thirty-nine, two-two-nine, that's your seven percent.
And that's just the number from three up to seven?
That's addition, that's a, that's a, that's a total seven percent.
That's a total seven.
So, no, seven in addition to the three.
Right.
So that's seven percent.
That's like four percent.
You have, you have access to, you would have access to four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We're not going to access any of it, but that, raising that lid that much puts you in a better position next year, because that goes into the formula for determining your property tax cap next year. So I may find out after we pass this budget, if next summer, we've got to pay a six-figure bill at least for a new range hood and then a fire ventilation system. So that would be an unexpected, that's not in, that's not in the budget.
But we do have in the budget to pay back four hundred thousand for our C D.
We do.
Which we don't have to do.
Correct.
So we could pull out of that four hundred thousand. No, I was just going to ask is, what were we, what was our plan if we wouldn't have had this little egg drop in our baskets, you know, repaid all that stuff? If the state Democrat would have gotten it, he wasn't going to give us any money?
Well, we, our levy wouldn't be going down a dime. If we hadn't got this foundation, which is fifteen hundred a student, which is only about ten percent of what, you know, the average cost to educate a student, so if we hadn't got this, our levy wouldn't be going down a dime, our levy would be about the same.
Or our asking. Well, I personally think that our levy needs to go down more than a dime, because I think it's ridiculous that we're getting seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for what is earmarked as property tax relief, and we're only going to use a third of it to, and relieve a third of it, I think it needs to be more like four hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we would relieve.
So you're throwing that number out there based on what?
Based on just how I feel, I guess, and whatever condition that's called me this week, and I've had to answer a thousand phone calls.
So how are we going to save that money on the other end, what do you want to cut out to save that money? You know, because we have to.
Well, you know, we just said we didn't need seven percent.
We aren't using the seven.
But you got, we all know good and well, if we have it there, we're going to use it as some more.
That is something that I am afraid of. If we have it, we will use it. That is something that I am afraid of, if we have it, we will use it.
It's a lot easier to say, no, we don't need to fix football field lights if we don't have the money versus if we have it sitting in the downwind.
So if next year, the government states says we're not gonna give you seven hundred thousand.
Then I guess we gotta up the taxes next year.
You can only up to three percent, you can't, you can't gain back what you lost in one year.
My question is, why have we not had more time, why haven't we, how, how long ago did they decide this, other schools, was it a month ago?
In August and, and in this, so most schools have been making decisions about this, uh, a month ago.
Then why isn't this on our, on our radar now?
Well, we started to study it a month ago.
We didn't feel we were ready to make a decision.
I don't feel like I can vote on anything until after I hear the public comment next week, I'd be sorry.
This has to be decided tonight, it can't be part of.
This was on the agenda, this was on the agenda for the night, they should have come and spoke tonight if they wanted to speak on it.
One thing, wait, I understood, you know, it's, it's not really, they didn't give us any extra money. It's a shift because it's not property tax dollars that we're getting now, now it's state aid dollars.
But we only were getting sixty thousand before and now we're getting seven hundred and thirty thousand, so from the state.
Right, right.
And about two hundred and fifty thousand of that comes in the neck, that comes in special net reimbursement, which we don't get, we're always a year in arrears on our Fed reimbursement. So it'll be over a year from now before we're reimbursed for our Fed expenses for this year, so those monies have to come out. And then we submit, uh, then we submit a reimbursement claim. So, uh, so the foundation is one piece of the seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar increase. Foundation is one piece, uh, Fed reimbursement which doubles from forty-two to about eighty percent, but that's a, a year in arrears.
What kind of way, we talked in our last meeting this year, Dr. Earl said that the bills we have in the budget this year that we won't have following year will be about the amount of the state aid that we get, correct? So a year from now, if we don't get that state aid, or if, or if we do, we have enough money that we don't have bills, or bills that we don't have to pay a year from now.
So like you're referencing.
That would cover, so we could stay at that three percent and not have to go over that three percent. See what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Because we get enough bills paid off in this next budget that we won't have following year, that we can use that money for others.
My biggest argument here, I guess, is, uh, we're talking about paying off bills that we already spent money on, right? Like, didn't we have the money lined up when we?
Oh, the HVAC project, we have one installment left on a loan.
Oh, we had that money lined up already.
We, we borrowed eight hundred thousand. We borrowed eight hundred thousand.
Through the middle of the paying.
I know we borrowed for ourselves out of CDs.
Payments five, eight, six.
Red mountain, yes.
Coming up.
Yep, one this month and, and one next summer.
So again, I'm just, I'm trying to ask is like, what would we have done if this wouldn't have happened? We'd be upping the taxes by twenty cents on the levy.
They'd be staying where they were.
They'd be staying where they were.
I mean, the levy would still be.
The thing is, guys, is the evaluation went up ten percent, so our levy should drop ten percent to stay the same, to stay stagnant.
But what about inflation?
I'm just, I'm just talking about this seven hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Right, but we're talking about a budget for next year that you can't run for the same budget we run this year because of inflation.
I get it, but I just don't, I have no problem with passing like a three percent or even a four percent, I just don't like the whole seven percent to have four hundred and some thousand dollars extra sitting there.
It won't be sitting there, we won't even.
They're not gonna tax it.
So it doesn't come to us?
No, it doesn't come to us, no. It's just available if we want to ask for it.
It just allows you to, if you need it.
But why would we, why would we want to? If we don't need to, then why would we?
Well, what if, what if the state comes back next year and says you're only getting a hundred thousand?
Yeah, but if the state comes back next year and says three hundred thousand, I could, nobody knows, so what process?
Right, but then we're getting shorted and we have to ask for more to cover up what they're not paying us. And the three percent that we're allowed to raise it will cover what they, what they back off on.
So you're telling me that this four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars and two, four hundred and thirty-nine, two, two-hundred and twenty-nine dollars is actually just sitting up in the inbox? It doesn't actually come to us, it doesn't come sitting our CD or our account, it's just something in the inbox?
Because if it comes, it comes from the taxpayers and we have to ask for it.
Authority is all that it is.
So then how does that work? Like, so then you gotta, so like, me as landowner, do I, do I get like called like, hey, or something?
No, we can't do it until next budget.
We still have to pass the budget.
You can only do it at budget time, ask for it.
And it would be next year's budget, a year from now.
It's, it's not affecting this year's budget, they'll have to, well, we'd only increase our asking authority for next year's budget, we still have to go through the whole process again, go in front of the public, still have to vote as a board. If you don't like it, you can vote it now then, but one thing that we talked about is they're just gonna be pushed back from the legislature on the seven percent. And then we may not, we may not give a chance to pass this again. If we need to have it next year and we don't pass it now, we may not have a chance to pass it again.
I got a little email thing here, it says, the governor's message is, hey, there's local control elements here, but please don't abuse the system.
Sure.
And I feel like we're kind of abusing the system.
We're not saving any of that money, it's just.
Our value to a hundred percent of the seven percent.
I get it, but since when do we have to follow whatever everybody else does?
Like, like Pierce?
You don't.
Yeah.
So there are several school districts that are accessing some of this, they authorize themselves to increase their lid by seven percent. And for them to pay their bills, they determined that they needed to access some of that seven percent in this budget. The budget recommended by the committee is accessing zero of that, okay, but it does put you in a position next year for an unknown. We're being told as superintendents that they, that, that they will be watching carefully, Chance, you're right, to see who they feel didn't need to access some of that, but abused it anyway. And those folks will have to answer to their local stakeholders. You're aware of seven fifty-three, the Opportunity Scholarship Act, uh, that's a piece here, too, they are furious with public schools that have promoted and supported the referendum to repeal it. And they've made it clear, they being Senator Linehan and others, that there will be retribution. And so whether they will try to be laser focused on who they feel took advantage and find some way to mess with their formula for next year or, uh, or, or, or whether they'll do it to everybody, they will look favorably upon school districts that did not ask for any of the seven percent. I think they'll respect that you are trying to protect your district, you've got negotiations coming up this fall. You need to be as generous as we can be in a tight market for hiring teachers. That, that's, that's one of my primary concerns is that we're as generous to our, so to our certified staff as we can be this fall for next year. Be, because the, we're, we're in competition with every school district to hire teachers, uh, so.
I do disagree with you on the, they're gonna reward us for doing it wisely because.
I didn't say they reward us, I said they.
All I'm saying there, that what's gonna happen is if people are abusing it, they're gonna just cut the whole thing. Just like, just like profit insurance or anything else, they always make rules to get rid of the bad.
I think that could be, if, if they cut that next year, that's where that's, we need that seven percent because we have to make up what they cut, cut us back.
So I'd rather be part of the problem than like.
No, we aren't, we are.
We're hedging our bets.
We're just getting back to where we would be if they wouldn't give us anything.
That's what, that's all we're doing, we're hedging our bets.
I want to protect my school district and that supersedes the goal of lowering property taxes.
Yeah, my goal as superintendent, my goal as superintendent is to provide the best experience for our teachers and students. My goal is, is, my primary goal is not lower taxes, lower taxes, lower taxes.
So if I call, if four or five landowners decide, we're gonna take our land and we're gonna move it to Neely School District or to Tilden's or somewhere else where we feel like they spend their money more responsibly. You start to, I guarantee I could call five people that own over eleven thousand acres and they would maybe get on board with that.
Neely voted for the seven percent and is spending some of the seven.
It doesn't matter, I'm not, just using it as an example, it could go Creighton, wherever.
Creighton voted for the seven percent.
They're all gonna vote for the seven percent.
The thing is, and my correct is that if we vote yes for seven percent tonight, that does not mean that we're gonna raise it by seven percent at all. That just gives us, if we need it, because we still have to approve in a budget and we have to, if we increase that.
How many budgets have we had to amend?
You didn't, you didn't.
Who's had to amend, how many budgets?
I listened to you, listened to me, too. Then we still have to go in front of the public and ask for a tax increase. That seven percent, if we vote yes tonight, does not give us permission to go ahead and increase.
Correct, correct.
It's only increasing our asking.
Right, the committee.
A possibility, if it's okay, if, if, if we have the support, am I right?
Yes, you're right, the committee here is not recommending using a dime of that seven percent.
Correct.
But our fear is that if we don't pass it tonight, we might have a chance of, of having that chance to vote on it again.
If we would need it then.
If we would ever need it, it's hedging our bets, that's it, nothing more, we do not wanna spend any of it.
And we wouldn't anyway without having, talking to our taxpayers.
Right, exactly, you still have to go through the budgetary process.
It all has to go through them anyway.
Correct.
And you have to pass the next year's bus, budget.
If it would happen to pass tonight anyway, and you don't like how the funds are being proposed, if we decide we wanna access it, it still can be voted down again.
As a budget, as a board on the budget.
Still has another round of approval and every, and just like we've always done before for a new budget.
And when does the seven percent go away? I don't wanna just say forever.
That is not our answer, that's legislative.
We don't know, like, we can, a year from now, we can say, we didn't need seven percent, we're going back down to three.
We aren't gonna take the seven percent.
I understand that, I'm just, I understand that, I was just asking.
I think it was a year, I don't, I don't.
It's a year-over-year rule?
Some, the Unicameral will do something again in the spring to, to change it, shift it, adjust it.
Yeah, it's probably gonna change.
Something will, there'll, there'll, there'll be some kind of reaction or, or potentially a correction.
It'll be based on how people use it, probably.
So, and on that note, this is something I've done a lot of research on, I have not slept a lot in a few days because this has bothered me so much. I understand the hedging, I understand, I understand most of it. Now, the schools that are using it, and I'm not gonna name any school or speak for them, the schools that are using it, are using it and they're raising their taxes because they already had planned on it. Some of those schools I've talked to personally, so they had already planned on it before any of this money was coming. They needed new parking lots, they needed new necessities, there was nothing frivolous about the choices that they were making. So they are in the allowable growth percentage that is a part of, this is like the clause in this. The allowable growth percentage, so that means they are taking the seven percent and they are using it because they had already planned on it. As long as we do not have anything that we are planning on, there is no building, there is, there's nothing, we're not planning on using the seven percent whatsoever.
Right.
And in a year, we can change it.
Right, it's still there a year from now if we need it.
They don't know though, Melissa, if I can interject, they didn't know they were gonna have this option.
They were raising the taxes prior, I'm sorry if I didn't make that more clear. So they were going to raise, so one school in specific, they, they've gone back and forth.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they go down a penny, they go up a penny, back and forth. And then they got to a point where they had a lot of maintenance to do, a lot. And so prior to all of this, they decided that we're gonna raise the taxes, they had spoke to their stakeholders, the stakeholders are like, it's about time, the parking lots need to be fixed, so this needs to be fixed, it's about time. And they were on board with it, their budget also meets earlier in the year and they discuss it among the whole board. And it's just something to think about going forward. So the overall idea of LB five eight three was to provide, to provide schools with more state aid, the aim being to reduce schools reliance on property taxes. Now, that is from Turner Adams, Senator Kay's.
Secretary.
Secretary, yes, his aide. I, Nebraska's the most valuable resource, is obviously our people, but it's our land, too, we don't have any more land to tax. We don't have any, pretty soon it's gonna be like getting blood from the turnip, we can't keep going up on taxes. And you guys, putting your budget together, it seems like you're on the right track. We, we can't, the valuations are gonna balance out that, taking that tax levy now. They have a relationship where they kind of teeter totter.
It's a formula. But you talked about these schools, ahead of all this had planned on spending.
Before they knew anything about the aid.
But this aid is also reducing their taxes because they don't have to borrow as much to do what they're gonna do now because of the aid. So that it is allowing them to reduce their taxes at still that same amount because now instead of having to borrow all of that, they only have to borrow the difference between the aid. So, so some of that money is gonna stay in the tax, in the landlord or the taxpayer's hands.
Correct.
So it is still benefiting that school and those taxpayers.
So sometimes you gotta refund on your taxes, is that what you're trying to do? And I've never gotten it.
No, but their taxes won't go up as high as what they would have without this.
I know, but, but, so where does that money go then, that four hundred and thirty thousand, it's just sitting up in the air?
It's in all the taxpayers' pockets, still in your pocket, my pocket, everybody, yours pocket.
So then how they get it out of your pocket then?
Next year's budget, if we raise the taxes, then you gotta pay more taxes.
We still have to ask for it, we still have to propose a new budget, have to ask.
My biggest problem with the, no offense, Dr. Earl, with the school is that it's the only place that can be like, oh, our expenses went up. I'm gonna have to raise, I'm gonna raise up how much taxes we're getting so we can cover it, like, I mean, when you do that with your cornfield, like, you'd be like, gosh, I really would like my cornfield to raise.
But does a financial company do that, do you see corporate company do it? They all raise their prices to cover their costs and pass it on to us. They're doing the same thing?
I was trying to go with Melissa.
And it's, I, I get it, Chance, you're right, but our, eighty percent of our budget goes to our staff, goes to our people.
Maybe we need to give a, give a.
Well, you voted for one, two months ago, you voted to increase our staff, and I said this will be a hundred thousand plus expense.
So how come our map stores are so low then?
We'll have that discussion another minute.
Okay.
One thing we gotta remember here, too, is our priority as a board is the students, it's not taxpayers, it's the students that do what's best for the students to get a proper education, that's our number one.
I agree, but what do we do when these stakeholders that I mentioned have no kids, no ties to Plameview?
Have they ever had kids?
Yes, somebody paid for their education.
Yes, all of them.
We all take our turn of paying taxes.
I'm just saying, I'm, all I'm saying is like we spent, never mind, whatever.
I, I, I agree, Chance, I mean, I hate this that we have these high taxes, but I don't know how you, how you.
You once told me, Mike, you said to be more efficient as farm, meaning you picked up more acres.
That's one way.
Okay, so for us to be more efficient as a school, we consolidate.
We're down that road.
I know, for some reason, nobody wants to do that, I don't understand.
And they're the taxpayers.
You're saying consolidate, pick up more students.
And we picked up more students.
We have been picking up more students.
We're highest enrollment.
But how can we're trying to do this, women are opt-in then?
That's a, is that just another, yeah, let's give the state, what is that?
We have like fifty students that opt out of our district, something like that.
Well, it's a bit of goal of ours to work on that. We've had that reset.
More students opting in, no reason. Right. And that's, we had this discussion the other night, having more kids opt in financially isn't always a good thing. Because the kids come in, we have to educate, they bring no tax dollars with them. So it's not, and especially if your classrooms are border numbers, where one teacher or two, okay, now we've got three more kids moved in this class, we gotta go pay another seventy thousand dollars for another teacher because we have these kids coming in. Is that a good thing? You know, yeah, our school's growing, but financially it's costing us money. Now, if they bring a big business in, that gives us a lot of tax dollars, that's different, but how many of those families bring the business with them? I mean, you, you want kids to come, you want your school to grow, but it doesn't mean feasibly that it's, it's a positive thing.
Hold on, to be, I'm gonna be frank right now, I really don't care how many kids come from out of district, I would like to see the kids that are in our district stay in our district. That's what I think.
Sure, sure.
But our, our enrollment has grown about ten percent in the last seven years.
Three fifteen, uh.
Three sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Give, give for not the last.
No, I don't know how many of those are opt-in and how many are in the district.
I mean, we, we all wanna lower property taxes, but we gotta protect the schools' interests first. We gotta be here next year, too, or then a year ago, or then a year, then a fall. We gotta have that, because we, we don't know what the future holds, especially at times like this. It's not to pick them up, it's just a, it just gives us that extra cushion, case some happens. It's not to pick them up, it's just a, it just gives us that extra cushion, case some happens.
I know, the three of us on the committee don't want, we're not gonna use any of this, and don't want to have to next year, unless it's something that pops up that we have no control. We do not wanna use any, any of it.
Right, and Chance, you're on building and grounds with Tim and I. And we're not proposing any new big huge projects anymore either, I mean, those are all done. Um, we might have some small ones coming down the road, but as far as something as large as what the H VAC project was or anything else like that, you know, those are all done. We're hoping to take a beat, you know, and just take a pause, you know, um.
We talked about that, a lot of the things have been accomplished.
We've done a lot of good things, and we can, we finally, it's time to take a little bit of a break. We don't need to do that anymore, you know, so. We're hoping anyway, like I said, not using any of that seven percent, but also we're hoping that we can keep trending downward anyway on our tax asking. How that translates to the levy, I guess we'll find out. I don't think we can promise a year out.
No, because the levy could, the valuations could go to hack.
You bet, sure, sure. But we do have a couple of things that are gonna be coming out, coming out of this year's budget that we're hoping, you know, that could help. Before we ask of our taxpayers for next year. So.
One thing that I do know is this money is coming from the Education Future Fund, it's one billion dollars. It'll take a while to chip away at all that, and his goal is to get that money into the schools to protect their relief. And so every year succeeding this year, there will be two hundred and fifty million added to that fund. I don't think this money is going away, not for a few years. And I think if I'm not.
Million dollar deficit, right? Because we're, they're spending three hundred million a year, but put it to where they're not, that's why they don't have any more.
Yeah, but they have a billion balance.
They have a billion to start with, but then like, so like next year we'll take two fifty, or we'll put two fifty in, we'll take three hundred out. So like fifty million at a time is gonna take a while to get through.
It is. Senator DeKay says that he believes there's a three-year commitment for sure, and they'll continue to work on it. But you've got a committed governor, uh, the legislature's always changing, uh, but the legislature is committed to property tax relief. And this is the only avenue that they can agree on right now. It's a start, for sure. I've been hearing about this since I became superintendent nine years ago. And Governor Villalobos, the, the guy that was able to get it done with the right people in the legislature, so. Yeah, it's, it, it's a good thing, for sure. Uh, but they, they also trust local districts to make decisions about programs and staff that they feel are their priorities for their school districts. So this, this vote requires supermajority.
That's right. Requires five, five members to vote against.
If I vote, if we vote this in, it's not gonna let us, make us look bad at the state level, just because we voted in the seven percent. They're gonna look at what the budget is, the percent that the budget goes up. So if we vote in seven percent, they're gonna say, well, you, you took the seven percent, so we don't like that. They're gonna look at our budget, and when our budget went up, not look at we voted for the seven percent, maybe use it.
We're not taking anything, not at all. We're just increasing our authority to ask for it, to ask for it, not take.
Can't take.
No, we can ask.
Because we can pass the same budget with voting this out.
Correct.
Exactly.
So we're not taking any of it for the budget.
It just gives us a little more local control over it than the state saying we're only increasing three percent.
And the future unknown.
That's what's always happened, we've got the control at the local level, instead of state mandating what you're, what you're spending. Yeah, none of us on this committee want, want to access any of that next year. No reason to, we're not gonna.
Chance, can I ask the people that have called you or talked to you on this, what their biggest concern was?
They just would like to see more relief than the two sixty-seven, basically.
I think we can promise them, um, not promise, that's probably not.
I mean, their, their biggest deal is they're just looking at that like, that's like, that's a third of what we're getting, you know, we're only using a third of it.
I, I understand that, but I think we can trend down next year too. And I, we can't, we can't make a big cut.
No, I agree. And I, and I wasn't, I'm not saying I want to go clear down, but I would like to see maybe eight percent of the issue, you know?
But maybe next year, I don't, I don't know, I can't say that, but I think we can trend down anyway over next year too. It might, I must be concerned.
Well, you take the, you take the four hundred thousand dollars for our CD that's in this budget to reimburse that back to a million, so you've got three years, or I'm sorry, three months of payroll. Which is what's recommended, keep three months of payroll. So that, that four hundred gets you a whole lot closer to that. I mean, so, but that was a, a, a decision by the budget committee and maybe they wanna reconsider that, I don't know, but, uh. Well, that's something we got, we have to play with this year. We put it in the budget, hoping we can repay the CDs. But if it gets tight, we don't have to go put all four hundred thousand back into the CDs, we'll save some of that and pay unexpected bills. And put two hundred thousand in or three hundred thousand, whatever.
We go with the, put it back in there because we did end up needing a flash, so we wanted to get it back up to.
So the, the current budget is already planned, I put the four hundred in, or are we not planning on that without this?
Was it four two hundred? It's in there.
All four hundred and.
All four hundred is in the general fund budget to reinvest back to a million dollars in CDs.
Plus make our payments on the, uh, uh, which we will have following year. Plus two hundred thousand back into the.
Back to building.
Building fund, that we, that we found, which we would have given. So that all adds up to a big number.
More discussion, more discussion.
Questions? How it got, how it answered? Will we go, if we would have to spend that four hundred and some thousand, does that vote have to be a seventy percent of the board, or is that just a majority?
That'd be under the budget, that'd be just under the budget.
Which is just a simple majority, correct?
Explain to me one more time, how this seven percent tax asking, which I fully understand we are not utilizing, how that changes things? Explain it to me like I imply, because I do not understand. How that changes things of how, where we stand next year?
It won't, hopefully it won't change, right?
Hopefully we won't use it, we wouldn't even need to know it's there.
Then why? She wants to know, how's it different from us getting the three percent lid?
Because normally we only go up by three.
Yes, she wants to know, how is that different for?
Our property tax asking lid for next year is currently right here, okay, and we're asking right about here. If you vote to raise that seven percent, it's gonna push your lid to here. Okay, currently it's here, and we're asking for just about every dime of what the state allows. This next year, we put that lid right there. You have a little more cushion.
If there's, that's some other.
But.
And because, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we're worried that if we don't pass a seven percent this year, that it might go away. And then like say next year, we can only jump it by three percent. That's what we're worried.
That's one, that's one reason to protect your budget. That's one reason to protect yourself, so that.
It's like a protection plan.
I, I don't wanna be in a position next year to have to cut a couple of features, and that's what would happen.
Reality.
Because that's what makes the biggest difference in a budget.
That, that's one of the main reasons why I'm phased with this, because we cannot have a chance of passing this again.
It's like an insurance plan that doesn't cost you.
Or it's, or it's like your banker offering you seven percent more in a credit line this year, but if you don't take it today, or this month anyway, and it's not there, next month.
Next time he's only gonna let you go up by two percent.
Something like that, very similar.
I kinda like it too, it's when they gave you the opportunity to increase your yield at the F S A office, that was a one-time opportunity to increase your basic, your base yields. You took it, if you didn't take it, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be.
That was a baseline, this is a base growth, correct?
This would be above the base, yeah, above the.
So that's the difference between those, the USDA and this? I mean, that's affecting your baseline.
That was actual yield, where this is.
And that is bringing, making you eligible for more money. This, I don't think that doing this will make us more eligible for these funds. I think with the formula, if we're getting fifteen hundred dollars per kid, the way Senator DeKay made it sound to me, and the slide at the leadership conference, that if we're eligible for fifteen hundred dollars this year, we'll be eligible for fif, so eligible for, what was the years on this? I have a picture of it, um, let me find it.
They expect it to be funded for sure for three years.
Yes, I have a picture.
Now, that, that doesn't mean that the unit camera might respond next year, uh, to how school districts went about. Make a million dollar budget, you know? It's, it's not in writing, it's not a guarantee.
Well, I understand that, but I also understand, I raise hogs for the governor, he wants to know exactly how much he drinks every day. I, I understand this, what, what he's asking, and that's, and that's where it did, the seven percent just bothers me. And I am, I know you guys are saying that we will not be spending it this year.
We can't spend it this year, it's gonna be next year.
I understand that we will not be spending it. But that scares me. It's, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I understand that it's just making this look better. I just don't wanna tax our people anymore. We, this last year, when the taxes went up so high, we were taxing people high. The inflation was affecting everyone, price of fuel, and this is everyone, this is not just farm families, this is everyone. And they're so incredibly busy with all of these activities at the school, and there's fundraisers that come home every week. This is not a personal attack, this is just fact. It is like getting blood from a turnip. At some point it has to stop, and I'm afraid that if we pass the seven percent, that it will not.
This may be the conversation we should have had when we asked you to approve hiring another teacher. I mean, I, we certainly as an administrative team, um, respect, um, that you recognized our recommendation is put that class and not put twenty-nine kids in the classroom. That, that's what we'll have to consider, uh, if we can live within three percent because inflation's at six. Uh, I'll find out in a month what our health insurance is gonna go up. Got several teachers working on a master's degree.
These discussions have to be had earlier. If needed more time, I mean, I've spent a lot of time researching all of this, everything possible, in days. There needs to be more time, there just needs to be more discussion, and if it takes more time from us, then that is what it takes.
Well, you know, if, if we pass this and we come down next year and do our budget, and we say, well, we're gonna take all seven percent. You can fill these seats, people that are against it, chew our butts, say, don't pass that at that time. And which we probably deserved, we, we're gonna raise the seven percent instead of hopefully holding it to three. But they will have that opportunity to call us, come talk to us or whatever before that ever could happen.
But my problem with that is if they can't, you know, we can't say anything back to them.
Not during the hearing, but during, during the hearing, that's about it.
It's, it's a little too many. Have we always been subject to the three percent lid, or has had something to do with it?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's a new, that's a new hard, uh, number that, that came with the foundation, essentially. It's kinda like going to get an operating loan, and you need a million dollars, and the banker says, we'll write it for a million two, in case something happens. You know you can do what you're gonna do for a million dollars, but we're gonna say it's a million two, so if there's some disaster thing that happens, you gotta, that's a lot of dollars, or you can go after it. You gotta run it by me and let me approve it first, but it's there in case you need it, for, for a good reason. And that's kinda what this is. It's, it's over our asking, what we need to operate, but we can't have it unless we vote on it and vote to do it next budget.
So it does push it out here. It's not like it's gonna affect us right now.
This is an opportunity to make some choices, some hard choices, I don't know why to. If we stay at the three percent and don't ask for the ask of the seven percent, and we have to cut teachers, we may not, excuse me, have a choice. Where the seven percent may allow us to have some discussion, can we? That's what's gonna, it gives us the, the ability to discuss, are we really wanting to cut our teachers, or can we? What's best for our kids? If we don't, um, ask for this, we won't have, there may not be a discussion, it's just cold facts. I'd rather have that in our hands than the dollars. I mean, I'd rather think about the kids. And the dollars are important too, don't get me wrong, but it'd be nice to be able to have that flexibility to talk about it, instead of not having that choice. I mean, you've got kids in school, you want the best for them, you don't want them in a class of twenty-nine kids with one teacher. It's, I've been there before, that's a big group.
Well, but now what happens is you lose teachers, will be put in those situations.
You lose teachers, and the facts are, we are in a crisis of teachers right now. We are in such a crisis, it's a shortage of teachers. And teachers, what, fifty, what did I hear last year at state college? Fifty-five percent of the teachers were thinking about leaving the profession. So, right now, Fort Worth, they don't have a sixth grade teacher. Yeah, they finally, uh, their kindergarten teacher said, husband said, oh, I'll do it. Hated it, so he quit. Now they're doing subs for, for their permanent teacher. So, we have to think about, we are blessed beyond measure with our staff. And we need to keep our, our teachers and take care of them. And we're not taking care of them if we're expecting them to teach twenty-nine kids. It hurts, doesn't it? Because you're, you're a parent and you're a taxpayer, and I get it, good for you, Melissa, because you care. I'm done talking. Anybody else?
I'm gonna say something that's gonna hurt somebody's feelings, but we talk all the time about cutting a teacher. Why wouldn't we just, uh, co-op Doctor Arl with some other school?
It'd be an option.
Yeah, I mean, that would cover at least one teacher's age.
If you can find a school at that time that needs to do that, so they don't have to drive sixty miles to another school.
Yeah, but options, all options would have to be on the table at that point.
And then, and not say anything about it after all. And that's, that's good, I mean, that's what you.
I'm not.
Yeah, and, and I'm not. But every superintendent might say, you know what, I'm not gonna do that, I'll go find a school, that need, has an opening and I don't have to do that. So now you're looking for a superintendent, also possibly that would be willing to do that with another school, and find another school that could work. I mean, it, it's just saying, there's a lot of other issues that could come with that. But it's a possibility, you're right.
I would be comfortable with voting for this tonight, if we can somehow put it in there that when we ask for the more, it has to pass by seventy percent instead of, which one?
Is that legal?
We have changed policy at a minimum, I would say, there's a policy that the, this state does. And you're just talking on one thing, just the one.
Yeah, just on, just on this, just to build on the access of four thirty-nine.
I think, uh, on, on the actual budget adoption, so if, if you got to, if we were next year at, at this point, and you wanted to access two percent of the seven percent you're authorizing yourself this year, um, I believe you can do that however you want.
I believe you can do that however you want. But the actual passing of the budget is a simple majority vote. But you could amongst yourselves decide if you wanted some of that seven percent, or needed some of that seven percent, which takes a higher level of justification, I understand that.
We could have another discussion like we're having tonight at next year's, what you're saying.
I, I feel pretty, pretty confident because of what we have in this year's budget that we'll be able to rule that out. And we've been fortunate to not have anything too unexpected. EMC's taking great care of us. This kitchen hood might be the only major expense as a, as a result of the storm that's going to come out of the pockets of our taxpayers. But that hood's been out of code. We wanted us to replace it with a strip building, and we got away with, with, uh, which is, it does raise that level of the safety issue, that's why we've been fine, but not anymore.
I think if the budget committee next year knows that in our discussions, we don't have the five of six percent, or five out of six support for this thing. I mean, if there's that type of feeling next year, the budget committee's not going to recommend that. Saying. We're not going to recommend using, or going up to any of these. I mean, but we need to.
I'm perfectly fine with the budget, though.
Are there ahead of this?
With the budget, it's just the, above the, it's all on.
Yeah, I do. It gives another level of consideration anyway for accessing any additional.
Maybe makes us scratch our heads a little harder.
Okay.
He's trying to get a little bit more.
Shiny as it is.
You know, I'll, I'll tell you this, Chance, I know we've done a lot of work on the school building, and I, and I think it's been good work. But I always said before I go off the school board, I want to have that million dollars back in our CDs, and I want our notes paid off before that happens. And if we do that in this year's budget, if nothing goes wrong. And then, and then we've got that money to work with, and we've got the major stuff done. Like I said, all that money that we're going to have next year that we're using this year to pay bills, all that's going to be available next year for, for increase, you know. If cost of living goes up, or if we need to do this project or that project. We've got, we've got a lot of bank there to use without raising taxes. And that, and that's where I always wanted to get, I wanted to get back to where we were when I came.
But you're saying we're going to be able to get there without using the four thirty-nine, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make some understanding.
I, I don't want to use that, because I want to get our bills back down. When I, I don't want to go off this board with a bunch of bills that we didn't have when I got on.
Are you leaving?
After election, I might. But I also think we've done a tremendous job of remodeling these facilities and upgrading them. I mean, you talk, hear people on the radio about the heat, they're down the east coast, and they don't have air conditioning in their schools, and the parents are just having a fit, because why do we have air conditioning in our homes and all of our businesses when our kids don't have air conditioning in school? Well, two years ago, we were that school, and we would have had a lot of off days this fall. So I think what we've done is tremendous, and I don't back down from any of those decisions, but I also want to get back to where we were. Because I think we've done what we need to do, spent the money we need to spend, and now let's get back to what we can do on a yearly basis, instead of taking out milks and doing those types of things because they're big projects.
I totally agree with you.
But I'm just saying, that's why I'm, that's why I'm going to stick.
A little bit more poll, because I feel like when we do a majority vote, four out of, four out of six people, I feel like my vote doesn't count if we, we get in an argument like this.
Well, tonight is five to one, so, I mean, the, the one is, it's, and it's not, four to two doesn't cut it tonight, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what I, but that's what I'm trying to say, that we should be five to one for, to access the four thirty-nine, that's the only thing I'm saying.
I, and I agree with that.
I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
I have too.
Because I don't have any intent of accessing that seven percent. Unless we have something that just absolutely just, if it bites us hard.
And if it bites us, I'm going to vote for it to take it too. I'm just saying, I just like it to be.
The only thing I understand is I don't know how we can do this legally tonight. Put it in writing and, and that kind of thing. You want it just a gentleman's?
Gentleman's handshake.
Handshake.
Well, we're on, we're on video.
Yeah.
That's good enough for me.
Gentle person. I'm fine with that.
So we have these same, we have these same discussions next year?
If we want to raise it.
If we use it. Be more familiar with the process. And yeah, if we're going to, if we're going to, if we need to use it, we get together, it's like we are tonight.
Hey, I'll, and I'll maybe go further, you heard the conversation earlier, I'll recommend a full school board budget workshop in the middle of the summer. As we start to see, what did this year bring, how did we do? I'll be able to have a bulk of the budget put together before valuations come out. We have to, because valuations don't come out until after, you've got to have it about halfway done. So I, I think heading into May, June, let's look at a full budget, open meeting, or full board, open meeting, budget workshop. Where we'll all start to piece together the foundational parts for our twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I want everybody to feel like they're included, not blind side in this.
All right, do we have any more discussion today? Open and entertain a motion to adopt a resolution as presented to increase the superstitious pay stroke percentage and determine the school district's property tax request authority by seven percent.
I'll second that.
I'm entertaining a motion, you want to make the motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
You make the motion now.
As stated.
We've got a second.
Second, go ahead.
Nope.
All right, second.
All right, well, anyone for a discussion, we're going to go ahead and vote.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Sal, yes.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And Chance?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried.
Good discussion, people.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely, break after that.
Thank you, guys. We're going to move on then to number thirteen, actually. Discuss the take hospitalers on transition to PTO time with classified employees.
Okay, so we just met before this meeting, and went over what you guys have in front of you. Like I said earlier, right now, we have different categories for nine-month employees, ten-month employees, full-time, salaried and full-time hourly. And it's just, everybody's has different amount of, they have sick days, they have bereavement days, they have personal days.
Holidays.
Holidays.
Vacation days.
And they have to come in and ask for each one of those and state which one, which one they're asking for. And it's just, it's kind of a tough deal to keep track of for all those different categories and all those different people. And so this is kind of what we came up with as a proposal to simplify that. And what it does is it gives everybody days, PTO days, that they can use for whatever they want, whether it be bereavement or a personal day. If they want to use all their days for personal days, they can use everyone for personal days they want. So if they want to have a close family member that passes away, and they want to take a week and go to wherever and spend all time there, they can use five of their days for bereavement instead of only have them one or two. So it just, it gives them a lot more options with how they use their days. And it makes it simpler to keep track of in the record, record-keeping part of it. So, that's, that's kind of the main reason behind this. The simplicity of it compared to what we have. So.
Who's all on?
The three of us here, two ladies and I, the bank sick days will carry with this new proposal. So any bank day that they had, if it was ten days or sixty days, carries over with this proposal. They're not losing.
They're not losing anything, nobody's losing anything what they have.
Right.
Banked, correct.
Banked.
Currently banked.
Now, there's a couple of employees that will probably be backed up a little bit on the number of days they have, total days. So they might, you know, if you add in bereavement and sick and all that, they did have more days than what they're going to have now, but now they can use those days for whatever they want.
Did you guys meet with any of the employees just to get a?
Dr. Arnold sent them all this sheet, so they knew the proposal, and they could come with him if they had an issue. Or, or didn't understand it. It, it, it is, we struggled to understand it ourselves, because there are so many categories and so many options.
And there was a lot of discussion over it.
At our last meeting, we were concerned about those people that had those banked, you know, when they retire, what happens to that? And that's why they came up with paying them fifty percent of their unused PTO days.
And they got paid for zero.
I got paid for zero.
I'm impressed, though. Not really, if you keep breaking it up. Linda Hamilton had days, and she's.
How many, because she had a significant number of days.
I don't think she had.
Did you, well, she had dozens.
She had quite a few.
Dozens, dozens of sick days banked and.
And she did not receive payment for any. So.
This is a big, to me, this is big, you know, that we recognize their service and their work, they've earned them.
If we'd had this system in place, she would have got paid.
She would have gotten paid thirty dollars a day.
Now she retired.
And that's what you want, I mean, you want your employees to want to be here and not just use them because they have them. You know, so if you offer them a buyout at the end, hopefully, they'll use them when they need them and not just to get rid of them.
We weren't offering any buyout at the end previous to this.
I think we just started with teachers maybe five years ago.
Yeah.
And did you retire six years ago?
I did, whatever, the year before. They were waiting for me to leave.
Yeah, we were going to do it way before that, but you never retired.
Just leave, why would it be so much better? We're going to pay those teachers.
So there has been teachers other than Deb that have left that have not been paid for those days.
Oh, yeah, many.
Every, everyone.
My classified staff.
Myself and before, yes.
Teachers negotiated for that two sessions ago, that we changed the amount last one. And it'll, it'll be up for discussion again this fall, I'm sure you'll be part of that.
And it's a good thing to honor their dedication and their service. We, we appreciate that.
Because when they're not here, we still have to pay us up. So it's not like it's cheap for us for them to not be. Not only are the kids getting the same quality education that day, because a lot of subs come in and don't teach, but also it's costing us more money because, you know, they're.
They're paying too.
Right.
But for the classified staff, which we're talking about today, that's not always the case. The paras, they, a lot of them have children. They take their days off for sick kids, they have multiple children, that's benefits now.
Do you have subs for paras too, that usually come in there too?
Most practically all the time, occasionally, Jen, we'll have to piece things together. But if we can get us up, we can get us up, because teachers and kids count on that support.
Can, can I, can we ask Gail, like, what is many concerns with them? Would that be okay, or is that going to bring her over meetings back?
I think we've done that before.
If, if you will, and to share what your main concerns.
Um, one of the.
Directly relates to what we're talking about.
I met with, with Darren, and one of the things I talked about in our current policy that we have right now, like, for example, after ten years, you gain, you gain five more vacation days. So you had to, that was one of the things that I actually looked at when I hit year eight, year nine, thinking, gosh, just a couple more years and I can get five more days, that, that's going to make me feel good. But this, it starts at six. On the sixth year, then you get to, and then there's nothing after that. That, that is the one thing I thought would be, I'm glad that the paid holidays are back, because the classified people that I talked to, the hourly people, they, that really, but that bothered them. So I'm glad they're back. But something that went past, even if it was twelve years, yeah. You know, that's just something that, maybe it's not a big deal, I don't know how much money, much more money it costs the district in the long run to do that. I know with this policy, I think I lose on just the days given per year, I think I lose six days. Now, I know I'm salaried, and I, like, I visit with Darren, it's hard for me to grasp around, I'm not hourly, I don't have to be here, but sometimes you just have to be here. So you can't always just leave or, or come and go or, um, I know that's flexible, and that's the benefit of being on salary. But the longevity thing, if something was in there, you know, twelve years, you know, fifteen years?
You had to go that far? Just to give you a goal or?
Just, there's something out there, so it's like, there's no light at the end of the tunnel, there's, you're not reaching for anything more. You know, you're not, there's nothing there that you're, yeah, you just come to work every day and you do the same thing and, and get your paycheck and you go home. Just something down the road, you know.
How about if we take three more days away from you and then do it back in fifteen years?
You want a smart Gail. That I know.
That, that, that's just one of the, you know, one thing. I know, like, right now, there's, there was three floating holidays built into this one. And I don't know when that got put in. Leon was here when that was put in. And I don't know how they come up with that idea or anything like that. But that was after five, after five years, you got it. Now, I will say, when I was hired, my first year here, the district did not give a classified person any at all vacation time. You had, you went the whole year with no vacation. You got ten days of sick time, a personal day, and a bereavement day, and that's all you had. And, and when you start a brand-new job, or if you have a family, that is really, really difficult. And when Mr. Han was here, then he changed it and said, well, we need to fix, I think we need to address that. And then it went to, if you're hired the first year, you had ten days vacation. So, but just that, that is one of the things, I guess, that I see.
Well, could that be something that we look at down the road in a couple of years, when we look at classified salaries again as, as a pay raise, you know?
I'm, I'm sure you could always come back and look at, you know, it's not in this proposal if you wanted to vote tonight. I mean, I'm sure you can always, you can always address, make an addition to your policy, like everything. You know, you can come back and, you know, just like you were talking about the taxes, you can always address it then.
The, the classified staff, that, or like, are the three administrators that considered classified or?
No, so, so.
But what about the, so the secretaries are?
They're classified.
So like, his concern is probably more geared towards the custodians, the bus guy, and the secretaries, because most of the paras don't, they don't really stay longer than, because most of, a lot of them go to schools, try to get to be a teacher.
Yeah, that, that's what makes it a complicated discussion is, you've got, you know, nine-month employees in your paras who maybe don't get, who are, might not serve for twenty-plus years like Gail has, and, and their hourly salary. So it, you have to find something that it fits and is fair. Mr. Salzer, I think you mentioned maybe the longevity pay scale, where we provide a two percent bump every four years after year six, you know, they, you could potentially look at that and say, well, at year twenty, that two percent bump is every other year. You know, so that, 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 that's not paid time off, but it's an extra bump in your pay. It's a way to show appreciation for super longevity, which Gail rightly, I think, makes, it, it, you know, advocates for, you know. So, I, when I think of the old, I mean, I, I like our people to be here more than, you know, I mean, when our people aren't here, we're not as good. And it doesn't matter if it's a teacher or a custodian, everybody's got a valuable task to, to provide a, a very good experience for kids. So I'd rather pay more than give more time off, would be my position if we were to choose.
How do you feel about to give more, or get more money versus time off?
Well, I hear everybody, everybody likes to get more money. I guess I, I can't complain about that, as you get older, you'd rather sit in the chair more. Yeah, sometimes it's harder to get out of the chair. But, no, I mean, that's another thing to look at. I will say, like I mentioned, Jolene was here, I was here, Bill was here. It is so much easier, and we used to have more custodians, you know. We had more, we reduced down to three, basically. And when you've got people that have been here, they, they just kinda can go and do things on their own and they work together. You almost know what you're thinking and you get so much more done that way. It's cohesive, it's, look at Nebraska football, it's a good example. Years ago, when it never changed, we were good. You get a lot of changing and now it's not as good. Just like your teachers, the more teachers you have, the longer the better it gets.
Is that something we could look at, classified kind of?
Look at, yeah.
I do think this simplifies things quite a bit and doesn't stick you with one.
I agree, I can see Gail's point though about, you know, hit the six years and then what's the point of, what's the point of, you know?
But they do get, like you said, that two percent raise every so many years.
So we are.
Over and above. Yeah, so if we give a three percent to everybody and they hit that year, they get a five percent.
Gotcha. We already had that in there.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah. And that's for everybody.
And another thing that we talked about is where we start, everyone at fifteen dollars an hour, how we are competitive with other towns and clinics that we offer while also not damaging other businesses in town by offering more than what other small businesses can.
I will say, thank you for asking, I appreciate that.
Thanks for showing up.
Thanks for sharing.
I don't know what the school would look like without you, Gail. I've been here for twenty years, you've been, well, eighteen years, you've been here for twenty years and I don't know what it would look like without you.
People did a good job before me and I'm sure there's people that would do a good job after, but thank you.
It's always nice to see you in the good field.
Any further discussion? Now I'll entertain a motion. Deal with our PTO policy.
I'll make a motion to adopt transitioning to PTO leave for classified staff as read.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Moving second then to, adopt transition to PTO leave for classified staff as read. Vote, Mike?
Yes.
Self, yes, yep.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
A motion carried, six oh.
President Raspuson, I will get a number out to all employees tomorrow as to where they stand as of August first.
Okay.
All right, move on to number fourteen, discuss and take possible action on second reading of policy six oh four one five, information related to dyslexia.
Copy the policies in the previous month's packet, but it's second reading, I don't provide to anyone a copy, but, um, yeah, it's a requirement that the department has, so we may could have passed it, obviously, we may could have passed it. It is a new policy, but it is a, it is a manmade. So again, it just requires us, and us, not so much us as a school district, but our school psychologists who screen kids with learning disabilities to keep, um, their study and understanding of dyslexia and to try to identify whether a student is exhibiting symptoms of dyslexia. I don't know how to do that, I trust that they do, but dyslexia is becoming a bit of an all encompassing. If a student has a reading disability, the first thing we look at is, do they have dyslexia? First thing we test for is, do they have dyslexia? School districts have been doing that for years, this isn't gonna be a great change in our processes. State wanted us to have a policy on it.
Can we lump all these together?
So here we are.
I just, I feel like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I won't speak to any of them. The, the, the next one on artificial intelligence will probably change quite frequently. In fact, this policy was probably written by artificial intelligence. But it will change, you'll see a revision to it, I, I would guess, because it's so new and changing so rapidly and alternative education program just says that we still have to provide avenues to get kids to graduation.
I mean, you guys are right with that. I feel like it's stuff that they shove down our throat anyway, like physically, we have no choice.
We only got three tonight, so.
I've spoken all endings, we've got any other words?
I'll, that's fine with me. I'll make a motion to adopt policy number six oh four dot one five, information related to dyslexia on first, or on second reading.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Melissa's second. Move to second to make a motion to adopt policy six oh four one five, information related to dyslexia, second reading. Yep.
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Self, yes. Move on to number fifteen, new policy requires two readings. Discuss, take possible action, second reading, policy six oh four one six, use of artificial intelligence.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy six oh four one six, use of artificial intelligence in school on second reading.
I'll second that.
Move to second then to adopt policy six oh four one six, use of artificial intelligence in school on second reading. Myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yep. Motion carried, six oh. Sixteen, discuss, take possible action on second reading, policy six oh five oh two, alternative education program.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy six oh five dot zero two, alternative, alternative education program on second reading.
I'll second that. Let's move to second to adopt policy six oh five oh two, alternative education program, second reading. Melissa?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Self, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
A motion carried, six oh. Wyatt, seventeen. You've got some special ones for this. All right. I'm gonna read this resolution and every time it's a special after I read it. Whereas, the school board is required by law to adapt by resolution policies and specific standards for acceptance or rejection of option enrollment applications. And whereas, the school board has received and reviewed evidence and information submitted by the administration and other sources and made determinations thereon with respect to standards for acceptance or rejection and with respect to the capacity of this school district to accept option enrollment students based on availability of special education programs. And whereas, the school board has determined that the educational interests of this school district would be best served by adoption of the resolutions and the policies and specific standards herein contained. Now therefore be it resolved that the option enrollment policy presented to the school board as policy five oh two oh two and five oh two oh two R one should be and same or hereby adopted in any previous policy or interpretation or application of the option enrollment program which is or has been consistent with policy five oh two oh two and five oh two oh two R one are repealed effective on the date of passage of this resolution. Be it further resolved that all paragraphs, sub-paragraphs, and portions of words in this resolution of policy five oh two oh two and five oh two oh two R one are severable and that in the event of any of the same are determined to be invalid for any reason, such determination shall not affect the validity of any of the remainder of the same. Be it further resolved that policies and specific standards for acceptance or rejection of enrollment option applications should be and are hereby adopted for applications filed after adoption of this resolution and are herein set.
Sorry, that's, yeah, language from legislature actually from our legal counsel. Because they mandated that it be adopted by resolution, they, they advised us to read the entire resolution. So this doesn't affect us a whole lot because we don't deny option requests or we haven't. Since I've been here, we haven't denied. This is the unicameral taking a statewide approach to a couple of problems throughout the state, primarily with regard to accepting option enrollment students who have an IEP. So on the back of your page, you notice, you know, the numbers that I have. Notice I have forty kids through second grade, that's because we have two teachers per grade, right? So we wouldn't want to accept any students in those grades because once they get to third grade, they're all going to one classroom. So because the elementary classrooms are bursting at the seams, we're not in a position to approve option requests for the elementary just generally. In your high school, they can just, they can fit into the flow. And so I, I chose forty as that number. These numbers can be what you, this is your decision to determine those capacity numbers. Certainly, these are just my recommendations. The big thing, and I believe those numbers are reasonable, it's our special education population. We now no longer can deny special education requests just unilaterally, which generally school districts do. Why would we take a student with special needs who, you know, is expensive to educate if they're, they're, they live in a different district? And so school districts have been denying special ed requests for years. And the unicameral doesn't like it and that's fine. And now, so you have to look at it on a case by case basis and your special education director or their designee will have to determine whether that school district can absorb a student with an IEP into their special ed population. So it, it really won't change much of what we do. This, this isn't much ado about nothing, but it, with regard to us, it will change very minimally our current practice.
And it's just get looked at every year because these numbers could change?
These numbers will have to be, this will be done every September until they change the law. And this is for next.
My only, I'm just wondering, how, how come, um, this, I, this is just, I'm not criticizing, just. How come the first, you know, pre-K, kindergarten, first and second are all forty, but then we dropped to twenty-five or? Like, so are we really gonna cap it at, should we really be capping at like twenty-five or twenty-six?
That's.
For the, you know, as, or statistically, do a lot of kids transfer out or move from?
Okay, we're, we're at forty for those because I have two classrooms for those grades. Okay, and, and so we're saying, we could, that number could reasonably be fifty for kindergarten, first, second, for example. If we're gonna have twenty-five in a classroom, the third, fourth, and sixth grade, the reason that you, you try to minimize your teacher-student ratio is because you're teaching a kid to read. And your, your, your final years for your whole rest of your academic career and indeed your whole life begin with your first formal years of education. So, um, is twenty-five the right number for a general, another general classroom? I remember Mrs. Hudson should be part of that conversation, that number could be thirty. It could be whatever recommendation you want to accept or visit amongst yourselves. It's just a starting point for numbers for, for our classrooms. Again, I don't anticipate that it will, will come up at all or that this policy will dictate whether we approve or deny any option request student.
My only question would be like, say we were at twenty-eight or whatever, say we're under threshold for second grade, so we let kids come in, but then that puts us, once they, you know, the next year then, do we kick those kids back out or how does that work?
No, once you, once you approve their option, they're in.
Okay. That, that's just, I was just wondering, like, if it hit that number, if we, how you do that? Okay.
And of course, your, your student population is oftentimes fluid, so, you know, I mean, I'm taking these numbers as they are today and projecting them to next year, those won't be our exact numbers to start next year, but we, we, they, they require us to do this this time of year for your next school year, which is.
Because you don't have the idea of what's coming into preschool or how many kids, not, not yet, so we don't really.
Well, my kids, did you have come in the first week of school this year?
Yeah, there's several that would get like that. But I will say twenty-five is about an average number for us right now, especially in our upper elementary grades. So, and is that, your teachers are comfortable with that, they have a para, they have the help that they need? Yes.
And that's probably where in those upper grades where we have one teacher per grade, that's where, where Mrs. Hudson will determine needs of that classroom and where we, we probably wouldn't say we want another teacher and split that class because we're going to have the space. We'd say we, we probably need to hire support, which is paraprofessional, you know, to provide support in that classroom, so.
So how do we educate when you're at school and you have fifty, sixty kids?
I, I, I don't know, it's a good question, because we never had that north wing. Yeah?
We had two in every classroom.
Mrs. Jackson would know much better.
There were, there wasn't a special ed room, it was in a trailer house.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the, the music room was in the lunchroom in the back, and that's where the library was. The back wall, the north wall of the lunchroom, where the books and then the librarian's desk, which was a para. And then, so there wasn't those rooms and there wasn't a work room, there wasn't a speech room. There wasn't a, there was a title, nope, title was in the, in the trailer house with the special ed class.
Which sadly was not uncommon, how we escaped our kids with special needs, but, yeah.
So, the building, the original building was just K six in the classrooms.
There wasn't preschool.
All the specials were, we had German in the lunchroom too.
You had just one kindergarten, take the classroom, because you had morning kindergarten and afternoon.
You had not German or you had German?
We had German, we had German language at third grade, did you have German with this story?
I, I had a high school. Yep.
Third grade, teaching German?
Yeah, yeah.
Draw, draw story?
Um, yeah, so it's a different makeup, you know. Our trends have changed, our times have changed, our needs have changed.
Our needs have changed.
Yeah, because we didn't have computer lab at that time, we didn't have beautiful library that we do and, or no.
Like, for Jared, they went, we had two classes all the way through six, didn't we?
Yeah, yes, you did. You, you, your class did, not every class was two.
How many kids were in your class?
Thirty-one. That's what we graduated with, I think, thirty-one.
Yeah, but it was higher number than that throughout the elementary a bit. Well, thirty-one is still too many for one teacher.
And we used to rotate around like.
In fourth, fourth and fifth.
Yeah, yeah, we'd switch around to.
Fourth, yes.
Yeah, we still do.
Dr. Earl, did you give me language for a motion?
No. You, so, yeah, you, you, you don't have language for a motion, but you identify who makes the motion.
Will this, it'll just be a motion to adopt?
Yeah, so you can use your notes.
I'll make a motion to adopt what Mr. Raspuson read on the resolution for that argument.
Is that good enough?
Who's second?
I'll second that.
Pass the resolution.
Chance and Melissa.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded then to accept the proposal for option enrollment request for next school year. Go ahead, vote, Chance?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Deb?
Yes.
Melissa? Motion carried.
And this is required to be posted on the website. So, I'll take care of that.
Don't need to read the bottom of that?
Sure.
Resolution having been consented to and approved by a majority of the members of the school board, this card is passed, adopted by the president and the Dune Hall of Law, we can be in meeting, conform compliance with the Nebraska open meetings.
We get, Kelly will get your signature or something like that.
All right, move on to number eighteen now. Discuss, take possible action on bringing a bid for ten thousand six hundred dollars in additional lockers for girls' locker.
So we're a couple of years behind the Navy violation of tight line requirements. Just again, this is a population growth circumstance. We, we don't have enough lockers in our girls' locker room for our junior high girls to have a PE locker. So we, we did, we bought lockers back in sixteen and we bought lockers back in seventeen. And the same company, we have looked at for lockers so they will match, they will be small, they will just be PE lockers for girls along a wall where we took out some of the old crusty orange lockers seven years ago. But we, we have to provide enough lockers for our kids. So it's a good circumstance to have, but they're pricey, two thousand dollars and shipping from North Carolina. We thought they were coming from New Orleans, so we, Gail and I went on a road trip and get them, but they're actually shipped from North Carolina.
That's a better road trip.
Gail didn't wanna go to North Carolina?
So these aren't going to the seniors and everything's moving now?
No, these are junior high girls' lockers. These are junior high girls' lockers.
Any additional expense, installation?
They're just going to drill them to the wall. Yeah, I'll basically just plank, so they're not just sitting on that floor, and then just drill them to the wall. Basically what they were like, the old orange ones that we used to have, that used, used to have in the boys' locker room.
Sure.
Only these will be the same dimension as the bigger lockers that the girls have, they're just shorter, so their book bags and stuff will still fit, and
I know, it's not-
Easier, easier to use.
That's a lot better, that's better.
But these are the types of things that come up, we're, go back to that seven percent, you know, something like this, we never planned on this. You know, it's a war, you know, but here it is, it pops up, you know, and it's only ten thousand dollars, but it could have been fifty thousand, you know.
So, how does this work into our budget this year, we go to report?
It's actually, will be paid for in the budget that you will approve next Monday.
Because the kid's got to have a safe place if he says stuff, they can have locks. Well, they need a place and they need a safe place, it needs to have a lock on it.
If they, if they want one, not every kid wants one, but it's pretty complicated.
Yeah, you can talk kids into using locks, you can, you've done something. Maybe we'll put that locks. Uh, the nineteen, is that like, we're gonna have, we have a little bit of leeway with that now, or are we gonna have to put more in like next year?
That'll be, it's nineteen, it's nineteen doubles, so it's actually thirty-eight lockers.
Gotcha.
Nineteen stacks?
Yep.
Stuffed them out.
Does that fill the space though?
That'll fill, basically like it used to be, that space will be filled. It'll fill that wall nice, there's space there, it used to have lockers there, and so it, it'll work.
And kids coming up, this will work, the numbers will work?
Yes, because we, we've got a particularly large group of freshman girls, which actually, we should have had these in a year ago. So with, you know, plus twenty-nine in the elementary, you know, so, so yes, we've, this will cover us for what we have all the way down in preschool.
For the foreseeable future, basically.
You guys will be gone, I'll be gone, if we run out of lockers, that'll be good, means we've got strong enrollment again, but, yeah.
What do you mean by gone?
You draw it out of the first one, that's awesome.
Well, I'll do to accept the bid, ten thousand six hundred for nineteen P E lockers for the girls' locker room.
I'll second.
Move to second to take, seven, ten thousand six hundred for nineteen P E lockers for the girls' locker room. Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried. Move on to number nineteen, the activities director.
Uh, September's just really, homecoming is this week, so that's what Friday will look like for us, unless it's going on with coordination and all that good stuff. Uh, October's once we get in post season play and that kind of stuff, so September's kind of a quiet month, it's just busy. By quiet, I mean, for nine, nine, five, so.
I should have waited for the busy.
How did you guys do tonight?
Forty-one twelve, forty-one.
I heard Wyatt had to sleep right, hurting all the kids. What time is sexual?
Coronation's at one o'clock.
One o'clock?
Yep, so we'll do the parade at twelve fifteen, take coordination, yep.
Coronation's in the tartan gym, yeah, right? Parade at twelve fifteen, Tim?
Yep.
And coronation is at one?
Well, yeah, that's all I got.
Jay?
We don't get into the knowledge, I'm just going in.
I don't know yet, did some votes out this morning? I haven't asked them.
I'll wait until at least four in the morning to issue the votes.
Oh, well, I might, I might kick a queen.
There's a lot of, a lot of drama on there.
Okay, we move on to number twenty, principals report.
The only update I wanted to give you was our book last completion, the grand total that we raised for books was twelve thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars. And what that means is every elementary kid will get at least three books. And then, I mean, each kid, depending on how much they raised themselves, could earn additional, but for kids who didn't have the support to be part of the program, every one of them will get three books for their reading level.
Some of my kids never came home with it, I'm pretty sure it got lost. Sorry.
That's okay, they'll still get books, I mean, that's what it was for, it's by everybody's, I'm lucky that they're home right now.
It always makes it home, it's just-
That's, that's true too.
Dark dog.
Paper airplane, lots of us.
Did, I haven't even looked, but is the playground putting it all up?
No, October.
October.
They told us October.
Agreed. So my mother and I are just broke about it, right, is he getting our-
It's gone.
It's already gone?
Yeah, it was gone on a first, first.
No, they play though.
All the other stuff, yeah.
Just give them all back.
They're now, they're now not getting splinters.
Give them all the boxes.
Anything else?
Yeah.
All right, we go to twenty-one, presidents report, I just want to say congratulations to Mrs. Hudson for-
Yes.
Award, we're in region three, new principal.
Yeah, thank you.
We're proud of you with that.
You're a veteran.
We've been doing it here with the, you know, with the extra work here, with the, the church and the library, so. Appreciate that, I just want to say good luck to the homecoming candidates and the games. That's all I've got, go to twenty-two, superintendents.
Okay, the big, our, our primary grant for the year has been, is done, that's, that's always about as big a task, to put a bunch together, to be honest with you. So that's kind of good times, always nice to have that complete, so we'll be able to, we recoup that money then, uh, next year about this time, so in the next year, you submit receipts to, to get those monies. So state, you know, the, the whole thing with foundation aid, so that in real dollars, that's about a five to fifty thousand dollar a month state aid check that we will see. So that's nice, forty-five thousand dollars more a month, that's good, that pays about half our claims on average, so that'll be good. Uh, I'll have eighty thousand dollars coming in S R funds, we're just, we'll be just about done with S R funds, and that'll be kind of nice, so that'll be eighty thousand dollars into our revenue to pay for expenses that we've already had and paid for, and it'll leave us about twenty-five thousand, we'll get that next year. Are we talking to the American Civics Committee, we, we need to meet, um, I've, I've mentioned the kitchen hood. I hope to have great news from you from our insurance company, that they're going to cover it, I think it's a stretch, but I'm working with the, the fire marshal to see, you know, how he could maybe nuance the conversation a little bit, uh, so that it can be thrown into our claims. Uh, I don't know that we've spent any district money for roof repairs at this point, minimal, bills are going straight to EMC and being processed through them, so I've had, had a meeting last week with our EMC adjuster, Radac, who's our general contractor, uh, Volkman's on the kitchen hood. So we're kind of just trying to not lose touch with each other, we still, as soon as they get the curb placed, any day they're going to come and there'll be a big crane, they're going to place the curb. So we're, we're stuck until they get the curb placed for the R T U unit, which will come then mid-winter, but they can't finish the roof until you get the curb placed. Once they get the curb placed, then they can do the duct work inside, reattach duct work inside, put the grid and the ceiling back together, finish the floor, all the tile, and the east wing is going to come up and be replaced. Uh, and until they get all that done, the classrooms have been professionally cleaned until Jim, today, teachers and custodians can kind of start to piece those classrooms back together, uh, so that when we do get the thumbs up, potentially, yeah, by, by August first, uh, October first? Do that a lot, but we need to see a crane here, uh, so that's, that's kind of what's holding us up, you know, right now. So the kitchen hood is, is the first day after school gets done in May, they'll tear up the kitchen again, and we'll be able to reconfigure, and so it'll be expensive, even though it only needs to be half the size of the current one that's there. But that, that's the way it is, you know, when you're talking about fire suppression, you know, you, you don't have any, any choice on that. We've been, we were lucky to be able to push it out as far as we have, lucky that he's letting us operate this year without it being hooked up to stainless steel welded steel, vented through the roof.
And it'll have a warranty, right?
Well, I-
The new one should have a warranty.
Sure, whatever standard, uh, we will get a, ever purchased one, so, uh, it won't be as good as the one they're taking out, it won't serve us as long, I mean, of course, as the one they're taking out, but the one we have now, was, was, was old and it has, you know, so, I mean, it, it is time for a new fire suppression hood. And so we may also look at our big cast iron stove that existed before that school did, which is still there, and with U S gas operated, obviously, whether we need an eight burner cast iron stove, or whether maybe time to re-invest in something smaller and more efficient there, so that might be a discussion, you know, next, next spring, as we're getting ready for, for that project, again, which hopefully will be cut by insurance. So you should have received in mail information with regard to state conference, always the week before Thanksgiving week. Love to have as many of our board members attend, that is a big deal, it is a, an excellent experience. It's great networking for you with other members of the board, but also for me with you, so, uh, I'll be pushing you a little bit with regard to this. Deb and Melissa and Mike and I will go to labor relations in October, and very shortly after that, we'll start reading the P P A uh, to determine a negotiated agreement for next school year and hopefully two, two years, so.
What's the deadline on that, to sign up for that?
Uh, they open on the thirteenth, registration opens the thirteenth, and I would guess they'll take you for all the way in November.
Thirteenth of September?
Day, it's seven.
Are you talking about?
Of September.
Thirteenth of September is when registration opens, but you don't have to register that soon.
Are you talking about the negotiations one or the-
No, the state.
State conference, this one, because he's already lined up for negotiations. The labor relations, at the embassy suite's not at Cornhusker this year, it's always been at Cornhusker, we'll be-
Labor relations?
Yes.
When's that?
The embassy suites, not at Cornhusker Hotel.
It's the first of October?
Yes.
That's in your email.
I said I wasn't going.
No, you, I signed you up. We've got somebody to harvest.
Chance, you got to come by.
I, I think I signed you up.
I don't know how that's going to fly.
But it's just, we leave on Wednesday?
The Wednesday.
We'll be back on Thursday.
Back on Thursday, one night.
Two days, two days left.
We leave Wednesday morning, we're back Thursday for something.
Tom's going to need a day off.
Yeah, Tom will be coming by.
I know it all, I've been here all the time, I've never been to that, I know it all.
That's all I have, Mr. President?
Well, thanks again for the discussion tonight, we're adjourned.
Who do they play Friday night, Kyle? It looks like fast rock channel.